Good evening. We'll call to order the El Dorado City Commission for April fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen. We'll have roll call, please.
Mayor Haynes?
Present.
Commissioner Guthrie?
Here.
Commissioner Lewis?
Here.
Commissioner Badway?
Here.
Commissioner Wilkens?
Present.
Thank you. Because our agenda would be invocation. I believe Pastor Debbie McClure of the Church of Nazarene is here to lead us in invocation. Yeah, we're here at the podium. Please would be great. Thank you.
Facing you or them?
Either way, whatever you feel comfortable with.
Let's pray.
Thank you.
Father, thank you for this day. We thank you for the right to come to your throne because of Jesus' blood. And as we go into, as we are in this holy week, may we remember that. But we pray your blessing upon the city of El Dorado at this meeting, and that you would guide all that happens, and you would be with each commissioner tonight, and each person that is here. We ask your blessing upon it all, in thy name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Next, if you will join me, just join me in the chair.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Recognition. We have a recognition tonight.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, commission, we have Morgan Barnes from Wichita State University's Public Management Center here tonight. She's going to present our HR specialist Haley Rimsburg with her Mini Masters in Public Administration.
Okay, cool. Great. Please come forward. Thank you.
First, let me just say thank you so much for allowing me to come here this evening. I want to thank all of you for supporting staff professional development. This program, the Mini MPA, has been in place for more than nineteen years right now, and it has over five hundred graduates. So Haley joins the ranks of the, in the Wichita and local area. These sessions were taught by academic faculty from the Hula Wall School and local practitioners. Attendees were dedicated to attending sixteen sessions at eight AM on Friday morning, which really was exciting, wasn't it?
It was very exciting.
We had eight in the fall and eight in the spring. Topics covered each week ranged from human resources to finance to strategic planning to community engagement to local economic development. If you look at the alumni of the Mini MPA, you'll see fire chiefs, under sheriffs, finance officers, and many other local government and nonprofit leaders. This year's class had thirty-nine, or thirty participants with backgrounds that ranged from IT, fire, marketing, HR, finance, and animal control. So this group had a breadth of knowledge that brought together a lot of different perspectives, and that is one of the reasons that the Mini MPA is so, so unique. This year, we had Cedric County represented it along with cities of Garden City, Augusta, Derby, Wichita, as well as staff from the university. So again, we appreciate your partnership and support of the program and staff development, and we are excited to see more great things come from the city of El Dorado. So with that, I would like to present Haley with her Mini MPA.
Thank you. Thank you, and yeah, congratulations and well done. Public comment. Anyone from the audience wish to address the commission? Seeing none, we'll move on to consent agenda. Agenda was a part of our packet that was sent out a few days ago. Any chance, Mr. Mayor?
Yes. On the, on, I guess what I'm, I want to ask before we get any further is, is that the, the SGP, are, I'm sure there's people here that are going to want to talk. Can, are they going to be able to talk during that time when that comes up, or is this the only time that they're going to be able to say anything to us today? Because we ran into that problem last time.
Well, the public comment part of the special use permit was at the planning commission.
Well, I get that, and that's what I'm saying is, is that if there's someone here who wants to talk about that, if they want to talk, is that this the time for them to talk, or what I don't want is to get, if he wants to say something, if he's here and he wants to say something, that we get to that point, he's missed his time to talk.
Yeah, that now would be the time to talk.
Okay.
Well, actually typically we don't allow people to talk in public comment about anything that's on the agenda.
Okay, okay. Well, I'm just trying to, I, I-
What, the answer to your question is there's not a mechanism to address that issue today built into the way the meetings are run.
Yeah.
Now, the commission can grant an exception, but, but the typical rule is, is that the public comment is available for the planning commission meeting, and there's no mechanism for public, excuse me, public comment at the commission meeting.
All I'm saying is, at some, we, we had that issue roughly a year ago, and I just want to make sure that we don't, we don't skip something over.
Sure. I think that's a relevant question, and Tab's right, the public comment section is for people to address things not on the agenda.
Okay.
So an agenda item either has a public comment section built into it, like we have public hearings at the commission level, or if there's no public comment built into the agenda item, that's because the time for public comment has passed, according to the procedures of the commission.
Okay.
That's not to say that historically, the exceptions haven't been made, and the commission has agreed as a body to hear outside of the, the time.
Concentration, concentration, okay.
Right.
Did we let that person talk last time? Does anybody remember when their time came up? Did we let-
It was in the planning commission, or last time was in the last time of reasoning-
When we had, was it, wasn't it in your, your neighborhood, that gentleman wanted to talk that time, and he wasn't allowed, right? Was that guy, or was there another guy? I think it was that guy. Greg?
They came in and talked.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we can, as a commission, when we get to that agenda item, collect the, for conversation.
I'm sure one of you is that Mr.-
He's from Thrive.
Okay.
He's here for-
So that, is that cat here, even here?
No.
Okay, well then, I'll shut up.
(laughing)
Sorry.
(laughing)
I just, I, I just, sorry.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. Moving on to consent agenda. Anything in the consent agenda, if they have a question or comment? A chance to review the consent agenda? If there are no questions or comment, I'd entertain a motion.
I move that the consent agenda as presented be approved.
Second.
It was moved in second. Any further question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Having no old business, we'll move on to new business, liquor tax revenues. Item eleven on our agenda.
Mr. Mayor, commission, annually, the city distributes money to nonprofit organizations that we receive from the state as part of the liquor tax money, and those monies are, the city is required to distribute those monies by state statute, and so those, they can go to organizations that benefit children who have, who've been victims of domestic violence, who are victims of drug and alcohol abuse in their families. And so this year, we have three requests. Family Life Center has requested twelve thousand dollars. Scarf has requested three thousand dollars, and Thrive Butler has requested five thousand dollars. Last year, we did not give out all of the money that was in the, that was in the fund, and so we carried over sixteen thousand dollars. We collected, one moment.
Says twenty-eight.
Yeah, collected another sixteen thousand, and so, no, that can't be right.
It says twenty-eight here.
It says twenty-eight.
Right, but I'm, I'm trying to think of what we collected during the year. She didn't put that in here.
She put it in ours.
During twenty eighteen, the city received twenty-eight thousand, forty-two dollars and thirty-nine cents in liquor tax revenue.
And I wrote that.
(laughing)
Um-
Then we're a pair today.
Yeah, we're, we're really on top of it. Um, I won't, I won't go into the detail of my expense, because now I can't remember, but we didn't spend it all last year. We have twenty-eight thousand dollars this year to spend. So we have a lot more than normal. This is not a normal collection year for us, because we did have that extra from the year before that didn't get spent. So we're asking that you distribute the twenty thousand dollars that's been requested. If you have any questions, there are representatives from each agency. Yes. There are representatives from each of the agencies that requested money here. So if you have questions, feel free to ask.
All right, thank you.
We may not know everybody. I mean, I, I know her. I've met Phil. This young man looks new.
I'm, I'm Dusty, you're CEO of Scarf.
Yeah, I, I think, yeah, if they're in the audience, would you mind coming forward, introduce yourself, and just say just which agency you're with, and, and just a brief little introduction?
I'm Dusty Buehl. I am the CEO of Scarf. I took over in October when Susie Thien retired. I just want to let you know that what this money is used for is to help us with our lease payment with our building here in El Dorado. We are looking to expand and looking for a new place, a, a new home for our Child Advocacy Center. Last year, we served a hundred and seventeen kids. Two years ago, we served a hundred and seventeen kids. Last year, we served a hundred and seventy-five here. So the need is growing exponentially, and that is just at the Child Advocacy Center. The need is growing just as much at our children's home, and as you can see in the news, child abuse is not going away. So I'm here representing Scarf, but I'm also here representing these children that we serve that are pretty much voiceless and living in a constant state of fear. These kids need somebody, and as a whole, need a community that will not turn their backs and not allow this to happen, and step up and report it if you see something. So that's what we're trying to build. We're not trying to build a place of business. We are trying to build a community of support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I have a question. What do you do, what is your facility for here at ten?
So the Child Advocacy Center, when a child is removed from their home, and sometimes they're not even removed yet due to abuse or neglect, they come to the Child Advocacy Center, and we provide a forensic interviewer, which will interview that child. We will record that interview. We will have a multidisciplinary team with law enforcement, mental health, medical, DCF. All of those people are part of this team for this child. What we do is we prevent this child from having to go each place and retell their story of abuse every time, adding a layer of trauma. We will offer this DVD to anybody on this child's team, and then we will walk that child and that family of the non-offending sort through the court process, and make sure that child knows what those next steps are, and walk with them completely through until there's a resolve to their case.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Darla Carter, and I'm the executive director of the Family Life Center Safe House. The Safe House is a agency and a shelter for victims of domestic violence and sexual abuse. The shelter, we had twenty, thirty-four women and thirty-one children last year in shelter. What we're going to use the money for is for our support group. It pays for the salary of our support group facilitator. Drug and alcohol is not the cause of domestic violence, but it is a factor in it. So we kind of stem on that when we have our support group, and try and get these victims back on their feet, and trying to live abuse-free lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Phil Benedict. I'm the executive director of Thrive Butler. Thrive is a relationship-based poverty reduction initiative that's based right here in El Dorado, and we help people find a way out of their current circumstances, because they just don't know how not to be poor anymore. So we put on a sixteen-week course that helps them understand the role they've played in maintaining their own poverty, help them to understand the different social classes and their perspectives on different life issues, and set goals for themselves. Health and wellness goals, relationship goals, education and training goals, career goals. During those sixteen weeks, we provide a meal. We provide childcare, a safe place to take, to attend these courses, and once they graduate, we match them up with people just like you and I, who walk with them for the next eighteen months to provide guidance and advice twice a month, and increase their social capital so that they find ways to not only reach those initial goals that they've, that they've set, but ones that are set many, many months down the road. So this money will help us not only continue on here in El Dorado, but perhaps even into next year, but to perhaps even set another class, a second class here in El Dorado. The, the, El Dorado School District, you know, has, has a sixty percent rate of kids who are on the Free and Reduced Lunch Program. So the, the problem is real, and we're trying to reduce that. So far, it's worked, and it's worked really well with our first class. Our second class is just about to graduate, and we hope to start the third class here later this year. Okay?
But before you go, any other questions?
Sure.
You say you, you're getting ready to start your third class, and how many are typically in your class? Maybe you said that, and I didn't catch it.
We, we set it at ten to twelve.
Okay.
And the reason it's that, it sounds small, but we start out with them teaching us about what it's like to live in poverty, and they, there's no shortage of stories, or the length of stories. So we had to let that get out. We have a facilitator that manages this process, and so we find that that's a really good size, and it's also a size that I think I can manage in finding allies, which is a difficult.
Are you finding, or that's what I was, my next question, are you finding mentors, or?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
We've found plenty for the first class. I'm working on the second class right now, and I already have a few. And then visiting various, you know, area churches and, and community action groups.
Where does your group meet?
Here, it's at the First, it's the United Methodist Church here.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
You bet.
Thanks, everyone, for coming in and spending the time to come to the meeting today. Any questions from the commission? I, I have one. We have twenty-eight thousand dollars, and we had excess funds from last year. What, what happens? Do we just keep rolling that over? We can't do anything else with it, but-
Right.
But fund organizations like this, and we only fund the ones that ask, right? And we can't, I mean, there's, there's not a meaning. So, so why wouldn't we, why wouldn't we give all this money away?
What if one of the organizations had a special need in the upcoming year and needed to come back to us? Is that permissible?
Yeah.
Okay.
I like that idea.
I'd say that's why, probably.
I mean, it's-
So, so, but it would only be the organizations that we've previously given money for. Not a new organization could come in.
Or it could be someone that, that demonstrates they meet the statutory requirements.
Okay.
There's nothing that requires the city to grant these three entities. Provided that an organization or entity meets the statutory requirements, they can request funds.
Okay, so I guess I would present-
So there's no, there's no cutoff date when they have to do it by, it's just any time during this year, correct?
That's correct.
And that's that we could get them checked out by December thirty-first. That's, because that's in the budget. But, I mean, if, if they wanted.
So who, I mean, I want to be careful with is, somebody leaves and comes back some months, and there's, the whole eight thousands are gone, and so how do we manage that incoming request from this point forward? Who, who authorizes them, and who authorizes them? Where's that all come from?
The, the city commission, if that is your job to authorize these requests, we, we get the information for you. That's everything that was provided in your packet, and that's your-
They're financially-
You only, you only bring to us requests from groups that qualify statutory, correct?
That's correct. And the major boards.
Okay.
And, and Tammy puts out a, out a request for-
Yeah.
For requests.
Annually, reminder that this is coming up, because we do this annually. I certainly recall that. Okay? All right? And do these, remind me, do these amounts match what last year's were?
Um, it should, in your agenda item, if you look, it says what the previous years are.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
I think actually Scarf and Family Life Center both reduced their requests by a thousand And this is Thrive's first year asking.
Okay. Any further question or comment? Well, then I would entertain a motion.
I move to allocate the liquor tax monies in the following manner, and authorize the city manager to execute the appropriate documents and contracts with the following recipients, and that these funds are dispersed consistent with Kansas statute. Family Life Center, twelve thousand, Scarf, three thousand, and Thrive Butler, five thousand.
Second. It's been moved in second. Is any further comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda would be Marmaton Road bids.
Yes, bids were received for the paving of Marmaton Road from Sixth Avenue to Second Avenue, as well as this includes the paving of Diagonal Road from Third Avenue to Second Avenue. This was a project that was authorized a while back by the commission, and we were hopeful to be out to bid last summer. However, Kansas Gas Service requested us to delay the project. They made a determination that they wanted to upgrade all the gas lines in that area along the road. So we allowed that to occur, and you'll see, we've got pretty favorable bids. The authorized construction cost for the project, the engineer's estimate was eight hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars. Pearson Construction submitted a bid of six hundred and three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars. APAC Kansas submitted a bid of six hundred and sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three cents, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars and seventy-five cents, and Cornejo and Sons bid six hundred and ninety-seven thousand, sixty-five dollars and twenty-five cents. Tonight, we're asking you to consider awarding the contract to Pearson Construction.
It's eight hundred and ten. Was that total project cost, or just the construction?
That was not. Total project cost authorized were one million, forty-one thousand, five hundred and forty-two dollars and forty-
So we really are starting off pretty well.
Yeah, you know, I had a, almost ninety thousand dollar contingency in that million number I just quoted there, so, and then we got a really great bid.
Yeah, and then design fees are in that, so we're starting two hundred thousand down, plus your contingency, three hundred thousand to the good start with, provided what, how contingencies go.
Yeah, we should, we, had, had a lot of time to plan this one out.
Yeah.
A lot of time to review. Right now, getting out and then talking to the residents again, starting to talk about the driveways, and they were all notified via letter of the reasons for the delay.
And they just got, they just went through getting new gas lines, too, so.
Right.
They're, and so we're hoping that all the, all the gremlins in this project was worked out with the first swipe with the gas guys. I'm just saying, I mean, any hidden lines or anything like that, that should have all been taken care of, right?
There, there's always going to be things you find.
Yeah, no, no, I just, but I mean, I think most of the gremlins have been, I would imagine.
And this is one of, oh, this may be the fifth or sixth project we've done out in the Township Village area since they reannexed, and, and being an old oil patch, there's always things to be found.
Pearson's done work for the city before, right?
Yes, so Pearson is a contractor that did Towanda Avenue for you guys from Haberhill, the grand park. They also were the contractor on Country Club Road for the New Grandview Elementary.
Okay. Well, if there are any questions, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that since Pearson Construction has submitted the lowest and best bid of six hundred and three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars for the project number five twenty, the city manager be directed to award the contract, said contractor, providing that the company furnishes the proper bonds.
Second. Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further comment or question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Item thirteen on our agenda would be special use permit for four oh nine North Taylor.
Yes, the applicant, Randy Uwert, submitted a special use permit application to the planning commission. His request is for a two thousand, six hundred and twenty-five square foot accessory structure, which has fourteen-foot sidewalls. Mr. Uwert did make application to the planning commission in July of two thousand and eighteen for an accessory structure of thirty-two hundred square feet, which the planning commission denied. He then pulled his application. And with the new application, and, and the public hearing was held on March twenty-fifth for that twenty-six hundred and twenty-five square foot building, the planning commission voted to recommend approval to the city commission with a four-two vote. They did list conditions on the special use permit, which include privacy and wrought iron fencing, that trees be planted, landscaping, and the siding on the front wall of his building to match the siding on his home.
Okay.
I handed out a packet of pictures, and I have them on slides at the, pull up on the computer as well, that were distributed to the planning commission. And I might just put the public to go through that.
Excuse me.
Um, this is a subject property today. There was two prior homes, two separate lots here that were demolished. This is the neighborhood north of the subject property. Dirty property, south, and across the street, across the street as well. This is a drawing. Staff met with Mr. Uwert and talked about his application, and said, and, and visited him with, about things, about the siding, the makeup of the structure. So this is kind of a representative view of what the exterior would look like from the street. This drawing here, I apologize, is rotated ninety degrees, would be his structure on the two lots. As you can see, the two lots together are width of eighty feet. Mr. Uwert's building is thirty-five feet in width. It will set back from, from the property line significantly, and the width of it matches the other homes in the neighborhood. However, it's much, much deeper. This drawing is, was something we worked on with Mr. Uwert about landscaping, the wrought iron fencing, privacy fence, trees, and that. There's just another side plan of Mr. Uwert's, so.
And where does he live?
He lives on Taylor. So he lives, he, he would share rear lot line with this, with this.
So the two-story with the white columns on Taylor is his?
Correct.
And so basically, he is expanding his backyard.
With, yeah, with his accessory structure facing another street.
Now, does he not have something behind his house? Now, does he not have something behind his house?
He does, I, I believe so, he, I believe he does have some garages back there.
That is a huge building.
The, when the planning commission discussed it, they got comfortable when the talk, um, went towards setting the structure back, having the fence and the trees, so that really the size of the structure wouldn't be visible, um, from the street.
The length of the structure.
The depth of the structure is kind of invisible.
How far is he off from his house?
How far is?
Is, I mean, the distance, I mean, you're seventy, how far is he off from the curb at this point, I mean, seventy-five foot, is that forty hood?
Pull up the one that just has the lot by itself, that shows the back of his house.
First setback about fifty from the property line.
Fifty?
Yeah, in, in the, I'm sorry, Commissioner Wilkinson, which one?
Keep going, the one that's just the lot, that would show the back of his house?
Yes.
Okay, now.
This is applicant's home.
A fifty, fifty-foot setback, is that from the curb or the sidewalk?
The, the back of the sidewalk.
Back of the sidewalk.
In the back of the sidewalk.
We did get, um, at the public hearing, there was, um, a adjacent property owner, um, got up and spoke in his support, um, we did re- receive a letter in support as well. Um, no one came to the public hearing to voice any concern.
I guess I have a concern that if we let something this big go in, regardless of how the neighborhood feels like it, feels about it, we're gonna start getting a lot of other people who want to put in double the size of what the commi- planning commission, I guess what we just passed.
I think we had, I think there was a fairly unique situation here, um, the reason Mister Uwert, that, this is actually two lots, correct?
Two lots.
He purchased two dilapidated structures and tore them down. Uh, that right there is an improvement of what was there. And, uh, I used to walk down that street fifty-five years ago to Lincoln School.
Has it changed any?
Uh, not much. It really hasn't, um, it hadn't changed much, um, it was, there were some properties in disrepair fifty-five years ago. Uh, I couldn't tell you if it's the same ones, but I just remembered that there, there were some, and I walked, I walked down that street for, from kindergarten through sixth grade. My opinion is, this is going to be a great improvement to this neighborhood. I've known Mister Uwert for a long time, he takes a lot of pride in his property, and he keeps his property up, and he'll keep the grass mowed, and he'll keep it painted, and he'll keep the fence in repair, and, um, he takes a lot of pride in his property, and I think, my opinion is, that this will be, uh, well-received when you, when you drive by or walk by.
A- as you saw in the memo, staff was unsupportive of the application without some sort of conditions, and, and as Jay and I discussed some of those conditions with Mister Uwert, he was on board for all of those. Some other things that gave us some, um, we considered is, this is two lots, so it's an eighty-foot combined width, and his, uh, structure is thirty-five feet in width, and when you go down the block and look at the width of the homes, they are similar and matching. The reason for us talking about the screening in front, so the front is just visible with the same width of the homes, with the, um, mature trees in the neighborhood, uh, acting as very good screening. This photo obviously taken at the wrong time of year with no leaves, but adequate screening that the, the depth of the structure would not be obtrusive, um, along the streets.
Is it gonna, is it gonna be privacy fence along the front or wrought iron?
Um, wrought iron.
And that was specifically requested by?
Uh, well, I take that back, I'm sorry, there would be a privacy fence and then a wrought iron in front. Um, he, he, he was planning to put wrought iron line, along the back of the sidewalk, and then privacy fence along the front of his building.
Parallel with the front of his building?
Right.
So there's gonna be a wrought iron fence across the driveway?
There would be wrought iron up in this area.
Yeah.
And then solid privacy fence.
Connecting the building.
Connecting to the corners of the building, yeah. And, and, and like I mentioned earlier, this was a drawing the staff put together to help the planning commission visualize some of the conditions we would, we were talking about.
See, I have a certain amount of time, but he has to get the fencing, the landscaping, and whatever done.
Well, uh, you know, prior to getting occupancy on the structure, we'd need to see some of that to have occurred. So release of power, those sorts of, those sorts of things.
Okay, any other questions? If there are none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mister Mayor, I move to approve case nineteen dash oh one dash SUP, requesting SUP for residential accessory structure measuring twenty-six hundred, twenty-five square feet in total area, fourteen feet in height at the sidewall, with the condition provided by the applicant, including privacy fencing, wrought iron fencing, trees, and landscaping, and matching siding as discussed with, in the staff memo and hearing at this meeting.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any further comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign.
No.
Motion carries four to zero, four to one, excuse me. Thank you. Next item on our agenda would be the Patton replat.
Yes, this is a federal item, um, the patented, um, addition which was planted about a year ago is, is considering, looking at adjusting some property lines to sell some larger parcels, so, um, they went through the replating process of, of that addition. And what this did is, um, create some larger parcels for sale, some interested parties in the area, and it went ahead and set aside a easement for operation of the pump jack that's on the property.
Okay. This is a continuation of the development that Mister Patton's been doing. Any questions from the commission? If there are none, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to accept the replat of Patton addition.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, any further comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign, motion carries five to zero, thank you. Next would be, uh, city commission reports for advisory board updates, if anybody have anything to report, uh, to the commission.
Mine meets us Wednesday, so I don't have a report.
Okay.
I, I don't have anything to report, but I had a question, um, during spring cleanup, correct me if I'm wrong, did, did we not say that yard waste was not something we were gonna pick up?
We will pick up yard waste.
We will pick up yard waste.
Yes, so, it's a different truck, so they're actually, they did the miscellaneous materials cleanup, and they're actually starting the, um, limbs and such this week.
I thought yard waste wasn't included, so.
Just limbs.
Just limbs, we're not picking up, we're not picking up leaves or grass clippings or that, just limbs.
Okay, yeah, that's what I thought, it was just limbs and no grass clippings and stuff.
Right.
In fact, the trucks were on the south side of town today.
Okay.
Great.
I don't have anything.
Um, so I'm, from the comments in the survey, I was inspired to go take a look at cemeteries. There's a few comments, wasn't a lot, but, you know, I kind of figured out, like, each comment equaled about forty to fifty people, if you figure out the five hundred between all the population. So, um, I went and took a look, um, the two on the west side of town, some potholes and some spots that I really think the roads could use some work, um, but the one, what is the name of that cemetery?
Bella Vista.
Bella Vista. Bella Vista Cemetery down by the railroad tracks, the old one.
By the mausoleum.
Yes, um, it is in really, really rough shape on the roads, the roads around, um, I was talking with Scott, and, um, it, it just kind of what I noticed and kind of talked about, there's a, the one road in, between the cemetery and the mausoleum, it looks like it is in, um, city, uh, city limits, um, but there's no one to pay for those streets in the cemetery. There's, I mean, it's just on the city's shoulders, if I'm assuming correctly. Um, I would really, I, I would like to make a, um, a motion for us to ask city staff to take a look at that and see what it would take to fix those roads, fix those streets in there, and kind of see what it, what, what needs to be done. Um, it's a very nice, classic, um, very peaceful cemetery.
Haunted.
Great, I even, I like it even better now, I was during the day, so I didn't see any ghosts. Um, but it's there, that's the original El Dorado, um, those, those residents were asked to be buried there very long time ago, and, um, some of them over a hundred years ago, and there's no one else to pay for it except for us, and I kind of feel like it's our duty to make sure that that, their final resting places are, are kept up.
So you're talking about the street on the north side?
North side, north side's in city limits, but he, Scott said that the one on the east side is shared, it's a shared road between us and Township or County, I don't know.
So is the cemetery in the city limits?
Yes.
It's just the one road that's?
The east side road is half and half, is what I was just told this, this evening.
I like Towanda Street was, is?
Yes, probably. Anyways, I would, I, I, just kind of being there, down there, taking a look, um, it, it's been a neglected part of town, as far as I can tell, and we really like, uh, some support and see if we can get, take care of the res- the original residents of this town, is kind of how I feel.
That'd be El Dorado Township.
Yes. The, uh, yeah, the north Sixth Avenue is, is in the city. On the, um, and it's been a while since I've been out there, I don't recall if there's any other than just service entrances off Sharpsville Road, which is the eastern boundary.
Yeah, okay.
Um, I think all of the main cemetery traffic would come off Sixth Avenue to the north.
I, and, exactly, I'm just making it a part of what I've noticed. The other thing that I had, um, with the conversation of two fifty-four, I've been very sensitive about people driving and trying to hit me as I'm driving down the road. Um, and I'm very, as sensitive as in really noticing, like, really, on the way here, four people tried to pull out in front of me, three of them had a phone to their head. Um, I imagine the fourth one probably had the other one in their hand. Municipalities across the country are encouraged, are changing their laws for Bluetooth to be required, that you can't be on your phone while you're driving, and I, after what, recently witnessing, after, um, just, you know, just kind of what I'm, what I'm seeing, I, I think that as a society we're too distracted, and I, I would highly encourage us to ask staff to look at that also, to ban talking on your phone without a Bluetooth, be phone to your head. Those are the two things that I've got, that I would like to throw down the table.
Okay. I, I guess, I don't, I don't have a problem with staff looking into and presenting back what some of those costs and what those issues are, and have a conversation in the upcoming meetings. The road, something about working would be about working into capital plans, it's just something that this, choose to do, I would think.
I, I, I think that's where we're at, I just, I, I feel like it's been kind of kicked down the road too long at the cemetery. It's, it's way too long. It's time for us to do, do our, do our duty.
I think we can. Yeah, it's the will of the commission, give the staff the directions, look into those things.
The only way to, to meet our policy now, uh, the Sixth Avenue on the north side of Bella Vista, turn it back into gravel?
Yeah, and, and that's some, just briefly private meetings that we talked about, um, looking at that.
Lot of, I won't say a lot, but there is heavy, heavy truck traffic, not a lot of traffic, but.
But it's heavy, railroad stuff.
Railroad, rail trucks that are traditionally extremely heavy.
Right.
I mean.
Gravel trucks, you have a?
Gravel trucks, uh, just haul, you know, I mean, we're talking fifteen to seventeen ton just for the load, not counting the truck, um, anything other than gravel. But I'm not a engineer, I mean, I don't think would hold up, I don't think we're gonna be able to go in there and just put coal mix in and expect it to stay for any length of time.
Yeah, I'd say, um, look at the interior roads within the cemetery, and then, and then Brad and I talked about the other, the area around there, and try to come up with a best solution and what that may cost.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that. Okay.
One other thing, I'm sorry, um, these, these two, um, charity organizations that were here today, have we tore down that building?
What? I don't know if it's gone yet.
It's gone, okay, never mind. Fast work, guys, good job.
I don't think it was quite large enough for?
Well, I didn't, I didn't, no, that's why I was.
Yep.
All right, that's all I got, thank you.
Sure. Um, I don't have anything to add, other than maybe just to comment, uh, for everybody to have their, quite frankly, their thoughts and prayers to the city of Paris as it endures, and the world endures the loss of Notre Dame Cathedral. That's a, that's a world treasure.
Almost nine hundred years.
Yeah. I would, uh, just make comment about that from the bench, that's a bad deal. Anyway, move on from that.
Mister Mayor, Commissioner, we just noticed a problem with the agenda item for Mister Uwert's, uh, building. The motion did not include an ordinance number, and it should have, because there's an ordinance in your packet. And I apologize that, that by a couple of us, so, um, I just need someone to reread that, and in its, where it says Commissioner Blank move to approve.
Yeah.
Say ordinance number?
Not case number?
Um, well, before case number, ordinance number G dash thirteen oh two, case number.
Oh, okay.
So, stick that in there, and then I'll need to do a roll call though, I apologize.
I wondered about that.
I don't, that just got past a couple of us, so.
Okay, so you need to, there, to reread the motion for item twelve on our agenda?
Yes.
Uh, to move that G twelve? Uh, to move that G twelve, G dash thirteen oh-two.
Ordinance G dash thirteen oh-two case number.
An ordinance to approve case number.
So, if you'll say, move to approve ordinance G thirteen oh-two and ordinance approving case number.
Approving case number, gotcha.
What's the case number?
It's already in motion.
Nineteen oh-one S U P.
Mister Mayor, you ready?
Oh, S U P, not the road.
Yes.
You said road, so I went to Marmerton Road. I'm sorry.
Mister Ewart's building, sorry.
Okay. All right. Entertaining motion?
Mister Mayor, I move to approve ordinance G thirteen oh-two and ordinance approving case number nineteen dash oh-one dash S U P. Requesting an S U P for a residential accessory structure measuring twenty-six hundred twenty-five square feet in total area, fourteen foot height at the sidewall, with the conditions provided by the applicant, including privacy fencing, wrought iron fencing, trees and landscaping, and matching siding, as discussed in the staff memo and heard at this meeting.
And I'll second it.
Okay, moved in second again. Roll call.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Badway?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkinson, no. Mayor Haynes?
Yes.
Commissioner Guthrie?
Yes.
Thank you. I apologize for that.
Thank you. Okay, now moving on. City Manager's report.
Yeah, we've got a few great projects going on in our parks right now, uh, wanted to provide an update on real briefly. Uh, if you've been by Gordy Park, uh, you may have noticed that the new playground equipment has been installed. Uh, mulch has been, um, distributed around that park. And so, the playground has been completed, but you may notice that we still have to complete some seeding and looking to, um, site spot the, uh, placement of the swing set that'll be there, and then once that's completed, we'll spread the mulch and, and that park will be com- completed, uh, for the time being. So, uh, I've already received several comments about that park and how great it is to have updated equipment. Um, I went for a walk the other day and ran into a couple of people and they, they commended the city for their efforts and appreciated the investment that was being made in, into Gordy Park. Um, so, once Gordy Park is completed, we are gonna move to the next park, which is Library Park. Um, we've got a couple of projects planned there, including um, new playground and basketball court. So, uh, we've started some of the work on removing, um, the, I believe that we're moving the basketball court, we'll get that all laid out, and then, um, we were waiting on the Gordy Park assembly to get that completed, the, the playground assembled, so that we can move on to the Library Park and we'll get that one assembled and, and get that one up and, and going as well. Uh, hopefully in time, so that one school gets out, the library gets a lot of use, and so they'll also be able to utilize the playground and the, and the, uh, basketball courts. So, we'll move forward on that as quick as we can. Um, and then hopefully this week as well, you'll see the first pour at East Park Shelter. Uh, we kind of took down that shelter and we've kind of framed, we've got the frame done, so we can get that, that completed, but Public Works ran into some weather, and then, of course, last week was cleanup week, and so this week, they're hoping to get the first pour started on, on that, um, on that floor for that shelter, so we can get that opened before too long, uh, so folks can enjoy that as part of, uh, as part of the park. Um, and then another thing that is, uh, being moved forward, the tennis courts in North Main Park, just to give you an update on where that stands. Um, Sue Givens, the superintendent for USD four ninety-nine met, and we kind of discussed a selection committee to review the request for qualifications for the design of that project. Um, we've received five, um, requests for qualifications from nu- from five different firms around the area, and so the selection committee will review those and they will prepare a recommendation for the school board and the city commission to approve in the neck, in, in the near term. So, that'll be real exciting as we continue to move forward on that project. Um, kind of an ancillary project, uh, in partnership with the school district. Um, we had some holes show up in the activity center roof this past, uh, spring season, and so we've, the school district actually submitted that out for bid to qualified contractors, and they've received those bids back. We haven't met internally yet, so we don't know exactly how much that project's gonna cost, but, um, we will be on the hook for half of that project to get the roof repaired, so that it doesn't leak when it rains. Uh, so we'll be reporting back to you here shortly on what that project looks like, and then how much our cost share will look like, um, for the completion of that project. Um, and then finally, this week is the one-shot, the governor's one-shot turkey hunt, so we'd like to welcome all our one-shot sportsmen to El Dorado and from the surrounding area throughout the state. Um, and as well as Governor Kelly, uh, who will also be attending the one-shot turkey hunt. So, if you see them about, um, please give them our, our best wishes, and we'd also invite all of our local businesses to welcome, uh, the participants to the one-shot turkey hunt, as that is a local El Dorado tradition. So, I think that's all I have for now.
I wanted to thank you for opening up the bathrooms on North Main. Some of the mothers are happy now. They were having to, they were taking their kids and they had to leave and then come back, so.
So, one comment about that, uh, all the parks, bathrooms, the restrooms are all open in the parks. We haven't had to wait for the temperature to kind of turn. We're comfortable with, hopefully, we won't have any freezing incidents. The one park that is the exception to that rule right now is Rice Park. That bathroom is being repaired. And once it is repaired, it will be put back into service. Um, so, that'll give you kind of an update on where those restrooms stand for now.
All right, thank you. Any questions of the commission to the city manager? None. We have executive session. We have two, item two, except executive sessions. Can we combine those into one discussion? Uh, or one time slot, or do we need to come out and?
Unfortunately, state law requires us to have an executive session for a specific subject now, and so that is why we have to, to not subdot by it into two.
But we can list a time and cover both of them in that timeframe, or do we have to come back out?
No, you have, you have to make two separate motions, and they both have to be part of the open.
Can we make both motions now?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, and then come out, or do we have to make a motion, go in, and then come back out and make another motion?
Well, safe side is to do it both, but.
Right. I guess we're recommending that you make one motion, we recess an executive session, come back out, and go back in.
Whose idea was that?
I believe it's your state legislature's idea.
We need to visit with them. How much time for the wind turbine?
We're requesting thirty minutes. Thirty.
For the first one?
Yes.
Come on for the second one, just.
Thirty.
No, second one, I mean, I, I was gonna vote for them together for thirty minutes.
Oh, so you want twenty, we'll do twenty.
So, let's do twenty and twenty?
Twenty and twenty. Yeah, I would say twenty and twenty.
Okay.
I move to recess into executive session pursuant to the attorney-client privilege exception under K S A seven five dash four three one nine B two for the purposes of discussing ongoing litigation related to the wind turbine and to reconvene the meeting at?
Seven forty-five.
Seven forty-five P M. In the city commission room, the city attorney will be attending.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. We will recess into executive session until seven forty-five P M.